Good morning. It is 8:30 and we'll call this morning's meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance. Item number three on the agenda is an invitation for a citizen to schedule time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. Just a reminder, there's a five-minute time limit per person and anyone wanting to speak to this agenda item must sign in prior to the start of the meeting. Any requested action must be scheduled for a future meeting date. And we did have one individual sign in. Jeff Strewy. Good morning.
Good morning. I'll try and be brief. I have two quick acknowledgements. I want to thank you for continuing to say the school board here does not, and I think it's sad, so I'm working on it. The other one is... The other one is I did put papers in with Courtney to be a driver for the DAV. I would appreciate any help that I could get from the commission to find out who that contact person is so we can expedite things. As you know, that it's very short coming, so. Moving on, a couple of stories. I served in the Navy on submarines. Two quick stories of people I know. One is a World War II veteran. He served on submarines and he was on a boat that was the only one captured by the Japanese. He served as a prisoner of war for three years. He rarely talks about it, but he did not leave his oath behind. The other one is a gentleman I worked with for 20 years at the post office in Washington State. He was a Marine, he was a Filipino, and he was a tunnel rat. He would be given a three-by-five card with a picture, and that was his assassination. Sometimes he would hole up for months at a time until his contact came in, then he'd take care of business. At times, he was not fun to be around, but he laughed like everybody else, and I don't think he gave up his oath either. Onto the other thing. The big reveal that will happen this weekend is this. If you have signed up to be a poll watcher, for sure in several states, if not all, they're not sure, all of your information has been plugged straight into servers that are owned by the Communist Chinese Party, in Wuhan, China no less. Confirmed, not only your information, but your security pass codes to get in as a poll watcher, your credentials, the building schematics, work times, payroll, et cetera, et cetera. And this includes their members of family also. The company's name that they found out about this is called Connect Incorporated. It's an election management company based in Michigan. The two people who brought 2,000 mules to the screen were the ones who stumbled across the databases and software that linked this company directly to the CCP, and there was a load of information about American election systems located on servers based in Wuhan, China. After finding out about this and going to the authorities, they were threatened. Now they want we, the people, to help them expose this story since the FBI is too compromised to do anything. The problem is that there are some counties and states around the country where this company's software and products are still in use. And we have midterm elections coming in in about two and a half months. This company also does business in other countries as well, such as Australia. This is possibly and likely just one company many tied to the CCP running elections around America, and Dominion is just one of them. So the event that's going to be taking place happens this weekend. It's a Saturday and Sunday. If you need information on that, there's a website. It's called Moment of Truth Summit.com. Moment of Truth Summit.com. What are the results that we hope to get out of this? Okay, did we just understand what was just read? If so, yeah, that's why we need to get rid of machines, all machines. Hand-marked and sequentially numbered paper ballots, voter ID, which we have, no drop boxes, which is a South Dakota state law that says there are supposed to be no drop boxes, period. No mail-in ballots, except for military overseas, and I concur with that. One day to vote. Is that a burden on our society, is to spread out a vote for three weeks? Where we can know the date of the voting day to do it, maybe even make it a national holiday on voting day? Small precincts. We can go back to all of our precincts and do a hand count rather than just have one control station. Then, all the mystery goes away. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strewy. Jeff Strewy was on the record? I read it off the sheet. Sorry. Moving on to item number four. Approval of... Yes?
I just want to say for the listening public, this is my eighth year on the Brookings County Commission. That whole time, I have been very interested in our election process and have watched it carefully and have been involved as we do that. And for our citizens in Brookings County, I want to tell you that we do not have any fraud issues with elections in Brookings County. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number... Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion, changes or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item five, consent agenda items. We have the approval of the minutes, approval of travel requests, approval of personnel action notices, approval of cellular authorizations, and approval of the human services report. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval. Second.
Any comments? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Pierce.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Forsma.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item six, routine business. We have first the approval of the claims. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Forsma.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item six B, Department Head Reports. We do not have Brian with us this morning, but his Highway Department report is in the packet. So we'll move on to Mr. Hill, County Development and Emergency Management.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. And you could almost just call it a plat meeting. You'll see later in the agenda, we've got, I believe, it's 12 plats to approve. On August the 3rd, we had a South Dakota Office of Emergency Management Communications Drill for Richard and I. I took vacation from August 4th to 10th. While I was out, the Aurora repeater bill came in, and the claim is being paid today, that hopefully will rectify the communications issues in the Aurora area, and I'll keep you updated on that. I asked the firemen last night, and he said they definitely improved, so we'll keep on top of that and see if anything needs to be fine-tuned. I did notice on the bill that was submitted today that they had 44 radios reprogrammed, so that should be Aurora, hopefully, is the communications problems will be rectified here, if not now, soon. We had a couple EM, Emergency Management calls while I was out. One was a herbicide release on asphalt. It sounded like South Dakota Agricultural and Natural Resource Department was contacted to take care of that. And the other call was a suspected gas leak, which turned out to be sewer gas, and that's quite common when you've got older buildings. August 8th to 12th, office manager was on a week of vacation. She married off her last child, she said. That's an important thing, apparently, in South Dakota. August 11th and 12th, the Deputy Director Hoggan was out. August 12th, we had three more meetings. August of 12th, we had a series of meetings. It ended up being three more landowners came in and discussed the Madera Township diversion project. And we're getting close to, I think, the deadlines, the end of August, and then we'll get a report on what all the meetings, come out of the meetings, and we'll probably end up having a Drainage Board meeting to discuss the next direction on that. August 12th, I met with the United Way Executive Director, Ms. Gullikson. They plan on having an event with the family on September 26th, which is a Monday down at the Dakota Nature Park, and she has interest. The Office of Emergency Management has this big turtle called Tommy the Turtle, and we're making a request in to bring Tommy the Turtle into Brookings so we can do preparedness stuff for children, and it would be like a family event. I plan on having Ray Lynn out there at that event, because also on September 26th, we're going to have a full-scale exercise with Sioux Valley Energy and a local fire department. So we'll be strung out a little bit that day, but we'll make it all work. And later on this morning, I got Ray Lynn, my office manager, doing the radio on the ranch. And today, at 2:00 PM, there is a FEMA call. It's the initial call from the Federal Emergency Management Agency on the county's damages. My office is taking the lead for all the county offices, and we're going to talk, and we'll compile all the information. Each department will give us the information that they want submitted for claims, but that meeting's today at 2:00 o'clock. It'll be in room 215. And on August 26th, I'll have to turn in a travel request today, but it probably won't be approved yet. August 26th, there's some emergency operations center training in Mitchell being done by the Office of Emergency Management. That's all I have. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Moving on, anything from the Finance Office today?
Today, later on, you'll be hearing from Jeff Schaefer on the legislative audit from Glad to get that squared away. We had a new employee start yesterday. She's spinning in great, and it's nice to have a body in that chair. Jenna Byrd attended the election workshop on August 4th out in Pierre. It was really well-attended. Twenty-five new auditors were there, and the information was really good. So that was a good one put on by Pierre. I attended the 10-county meeting with Christine and many of you. Let's see, Jennifer Bellar and Christine are going to go to a Tyler training along with Rusty and Jacob on August 18th. And then, as far as Fall Convention, I do have myself and two others down to go. I may decrease that if the agenda doesn't warrant the expense of going. So letting you know that. Otherwise, thank you, Leanne, for mentioning that on elections. I do think about that quite often when I hear the national news stories, how lucky we are in South Dakota with the process that we have. It's very transparent and very foolproof. I mean, it's a good system we have. And also, to let the public know, we're very transparent with it. Election night, you can certainly come and watch the process from the hallway. We have that nice glass window, so anyone who wants to come watch can certainly do that. That's about all I have.
Any questions? Nope. Thanks, Lori. Sheriff.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Detention report there had 37 inmates, as of yesterday, but we got 40 in there. It was a busy night for the booking area. Holding five, five for Moody County and one for Lake so far. That's in there. And there is, we're down a few participants in the 24/7 program, 93. We opened up 24/7 in the 24/7 area yesterday, so it was nice to take that load off the booking area. And Wednesday, tomorrow, we'll start fingerprinting in that portable fingerprint machine that I have, so that should help with taking some of the pressure off, opening up back there at booking and so forth. Other than that, just on the inmates that I have, I have two inmates. You know, I have a thing about this, I've talked about pre-trial inmates a lot, and I still have these two pre-trial inmates. Maybe Dan can help us out on this, and what, I'm kind of concerned on this. Simonson, something about Minnesota, he's got credit served for here, is that Simonson's been in jail for 437 days, and Nieman's been in jail for 424 days. And my staff is telling me something about Minnesota. They got credit, he's getting credit served for Minnesota?
Well, we haven't released our bond on him, so our bond would take precedent over that, because there's extradition involved. And just for the public's awareness, he's being charged with multiple counts of first-degree rape involving child victims, and I'm pretty sure the public wants him held on a higher bond pre-trial. And with it being a significant case, his pre-trial detention is very common in this particular case, as well as the amount of days, and so... Same thing with Nieman, child victims.
Any questions?
Item C is the Finance Officer's report and the Beattie Pleasure Payroll and Additives Total, Highway Expenditures Report, and the Register of Due Statement of Fees Collected. So we'll note that for the record. Yes, Commissioner Jensen.
I did have a call from Missy this morning, they're out fall, starting their fall-spring run, and she wouldn't make it today, but...
Thank you. All right. We'll come back to the scheduled agenda items, so we'll move on to item 8A, Regular Business. Action to approve Resolution Number 22-33, a plat of Lot 1 of Sur addition in the southwest quarter of Section 4 Township 109 North, Range 48 West of the 5th Prime Meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Any comments?
We heard this next, this one statement will go off all the plats, but we heard these on regular schedule, planning and zoning meeting on August 2nd, 2022. They had a public hearing on them, and they was approved by the Planning Commission and sent to this board with a recommendation that you approve them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Madam Cherry, you were just faster than I was. Item A, B, and J, I will be abstaining on.
Sounds good. Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Jensen.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Forsma.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B, action to approve Resolution Number 22-34, a plat of Lot 1 of Sur addition in the southeast quarter of Section 5 Township 109 North, Range 48 West of the 5th Prime Meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Any discussion on this one?
No further comments.
Okay. And we have one abstention. Hearing no other comments, call the roll, please.
Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Forsma.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item C, action to approve Resolution Number 22-35, a plat of tract 1 of Langland's addition in the northwest quarter of Section 32 Township 111 North, Range 52 West of the 5th Prime Meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Pierce.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Forsma.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item D, action to approve Resolution Number 22-36, a plat of Lot 47A of the first edition of Lake Pontset Heights subdivision in Lot 2, Section 5 Township 112 North, Range 52 West of the 5th Prime Meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Forsma.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item E, action to approve Resolution Number 22-37, a plat of blocks 1, 2, 3, and 4, Langham addition in the southwest quarter and west half of the southeast quarter of Section 18 Township 109 North, Range 51 West of the 5th Prime Meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approve.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Jensen.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Forsma.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item F, action to approve Resolution Number 22-38, a plat of block 1, Jensen's second addition in the northwest quarter of Section 9 Township 109 North, Range 48 West of the 5th Prime Meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Krogman.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Forsma.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item G, action to approve Resolution Number 22-39, a plat of block 1 Inger addition in the northwest quarter of Section 7 Township 112 North, Range 47 West of the 5th Prime Meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Pierce.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Forsma.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item H, action to approve Resolution 22-40, a plat of lots 1B and 1C of Goodfellow addition in the north half of the northeast quarter of Section 18 Township 111 North, Range 51 West of the 5th Prime Meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota. Is there a motion to approve?
So, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Forsma.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item I, action to approve Resolution 22-41, a plat of tract 1 of BMU WTP addition of the northwest quarter and the southwest quarter of Section 20 Township 110 North, Range 49 West of the 5th Prime Meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Jensen.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Forsma.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item J, action to approve Resolution 22-42, a plat of Lot 1 of Smallfield addition in the northeast quarter of Section 7 Township 109 North, Range 47 West of the 5th Prime Meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Forsma.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item K, action to approve Resolution Number 22-43, a plat of lots 1 and 2 of Cooper addition in government lots 4, 5, 6, and 7 of Section 6 Township 110 North, Range 50 West of the 5th Prime Meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Pierce.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Krogman.
Abstain.
Forsma.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item L, action to approve Resolution 22-44, a plat of Lot 1 of Risty Farms addition in the government lot 3 in the south half of the northwest quarter of Section 4 Township 109 North, Range 52 West of the 5th Prime Meridian, Brookings, South Dakota. And is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Pierce.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Forsma.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Item M, action to approve agreement Number 22-79, an amended custodial contract for Brookings City County Government Center. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments?
This is the contract that we have for the nightly cleaning crew that comes into this building. The company that we had the contract with, ISS, was bought out by this Velocity Services, so this is the new contract, clarifying that change in ownership.
Sounds good. Any discussion? Sounds good. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Boersma.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item N, action to approve agreement number twenty-two dash eighty, a memorandum of understanding between Brookings County and Helpline Center Network of Care. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this one?
Leanne, are you okay with this version?
I think so. I mean, we can give it a try and see how it's going to work.
Okay.
Are you okay with it?
Yeah, I would encourage the commissioner to approve it.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Jensen.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Boersma.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item O, action to approve change order number zero one five for the Brookings County Detention Center expansion and remodel project in the amount of sixty-two thousand fifty-three dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval. Second.
Any discussion?
I had kind of listed out all of the different changes that this included. The biggest, the biggest amount was about fifty-four, five. That was when we had a change to do security, update security at the courthouse. That, that change also included updating the security items at the current sheriff's office. Well, we, we decided not to go with the change order for the courthouse. And then it wasn't caught that the, the sheriff's office was included. And then that got deleted. So there was some, just some miscommunication. So this guy had to get added back in. So that's why you see that dollar amount there.
Any other questions?
Where, where are we at? Obviously, we did the walkthrough and the punch list. I'm still there working on stuff. Do we have an idea when we're going to be closed out or kind of off the project, off the, I don't know how the bills will come in later or not, but we have a guaranteed maximum price here. I want to see where we come in at that.
Yep. And I can get that information for you for an upcoming meeting as well, where we're at with the bills. That, that way we have, I don't know if, if Larry and Mike have, or if Marty has any better idea on where we're at and ready to move in type.
I talked to the sheriff a little bit earlier, so why don't you go ahead and brief everybody where we're at. Twenty-four seven is moved in and operational. And you can brief us on the rest of our conversation. So I don't misquote. So you go ahead and tell us where we're at. We're waiting for furniture, I know that.
There's still some touch-up stuff that they need to do. And, and there's still some doors that need to be, their locks need to be put on and so forth, so.
But a lot of that, a lot of that stuff, we probably will not get billed for. Cosmetic, I mean, there are issues with the initial installation.
Generally, punch list stuff needs to be completed yet. We've got a couple of glass windows that had broken on installation that are here. They just need to get those installed. The gun locker needs to be installed, replacing the old one. It's just little things that'll have to be done over the next thirty days probably before we get it all completed. But they are starting to move into some of the facilities. I know the sheriff had mentioned that they're trying to move some desks in for the, the attorneys to visit with clients. That, that furniture didn't get ordered on time for whatever reason, or didn't get delivered on time for whatever reason. So we're still waiting for that. And that should be coming here shortly. At that point, we'll have also those other things tidied up. So we, I, I don't expect a lot of different changes as far as the cost.
Any other discussion on this before we call the roll on that change order? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Krogman.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Boersma.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item P, action to approve a request to fill vacancy for a full-time correctional officer in the sheriff's office. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Perfect. Um, let's see here. We do have a scheduled nine o'clock. Item seven A is a scheduled nine o'clock public hearing and action to approve a special events license for Andrea Dietrich and J Street Pub for a wedding at Bennett Barn on August twenty-seven, twenty twenty-two. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just curious if the sheriff has any concerns.
We have to, we have to do the public hearing.
We will open the public hearing. Any proponents? Please state your name for the record.
Andrea Dietrich. Yeah. So we're just doing another wedding out at the Bennett Barn.
Sounds great. Any other proponents? Hearing none, any opponents? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Comments from the commissioners? No comments from the sheriff. Okay. Any other discussion items? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Pierce.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Boersma.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Item Q, action to declare items as surplus property to be disposed of. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Um, in your packet, you just have, should have seen a list of items, just trying to do a little bit of cleanup here. So a lot of these just came from our IT specialist, Sean Plowman. And again, just trying to do some cleanup, so.
Sounds good. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries. I don't, are, I don't know if this is a short discussion, probably not. Probably not. Um, our nine oh five has no public hearing attached to it. And since I think most of firefighter folks are here, it might make sense to move on to our scheduled nine oh five. So this is a request for American Rescue Plan Act funding for Brookings County Fire Department. So Dave Jacobson, I'll invite you forward. Anybody else that you're going to have join you to speak, can sure come forward.
Uh, good morning. Dave Jacobson with the Brookings County Firefighter Association, representing the, uh, most of them are behind me. Uh, that would be Aurora, Bruce, Brookings, Elkton, Sania, Volga, and White. Um, two weeks ago, prior to your September second meeting, I submitted a budget to Stacy in regards to the allocation of the ARPA funds. I guess first of all, thank you for allowing us to sit here and request that from you. Secondly, are there any questions in regards to that, that myself or any of the other members can answer for you? I submitted basically a summary of everybody's request. Some of them were multiple pages. Um, I do have details on those requests with me.
Questions by the commissioners? I guess I have a handful. Uh, the kind of influx of one-time monies happens so rarely and without, I mean, there's no way to plan for it. I'm wondering what the plans are for long-term upkeep and maintenance of all of this new equipment. Because what's going to happen is we're going to have a whole bunch of new equipment that's going to cycle out of useful life at roughly the same time. And I'm a little bit concerned about that for the future.
I'll speak to the department I belong to, which is Volga. In our request, the Volga Fire Department has requested funds to replace nineteen seventy-three Jeep, I believe is the brand Kaiser Military Six by Six Truck. This truck was repurposed by the prisoners in Springfield, South Dakota years ago, made into a fire truck for hauling water. And it is impossible to find parts for them. Um, as I mentioned, it's a nineteen seventy-three military truck. They're obsolete. You can't just go to NAPA and request, you know, and get brake components, power steering. There, there's no heat, there's no air conditioning. So we're updating, a lot of us here are updating equipment that's older than the members on our department. Uh, hopefully with items that are easily serviced, safer to drive, that have heat in the winter because we go to fires in the winter. Um, air conditioning because we go to fires in the summer. Um, we put a special emphasis on items that benefit not only our, our municipal residents, but the county residents as well. Brush trucks for grass fires, tender trucks because we haul water out in the country where there is no water. Uh, we're, we're just updating stuff that, that we need to. We were requested to bring to you items that we wouldn't normally be able to fund, or not be able to fund without a great deal of saving, fundraising, um, whether it be adjusting our township fire protection agreements with our residents. Uh, we were requested to bring that to you. And I believe, and I believe in our request, that's what we've done. Strictly, not strictly, but mainly to benefit the rural residents of Brookings County.
I think for the, the listening public, it's important to understand how rural fire departments and first responders are funded in general. And so it is fundraising and county and township tax dollars and those types of things. And so these one-time funds make sense for this type of request in a lot of ways.
All of the departments have different needs too. Here again, I'm going to speak to Volga. Um, we requested funds to replace what we feel is our greatest need, that, you know, we wouldn't be able to replace without a great deal of fundraising. But some of the other departments have different needs and might need bunker gear or air packs or smaller ticket items. And if that's their need, that's what we requested they submit their request for.
Mr. Krogman.
Yeah, a question for you.
Yeah.
Are we looking at these numbers here as replacing with new? Is that what we're looking at doing here?
I believe all but two of the requests that were made were for new apparatus. Um, two of them, I believe, were for potentially to find a used. Or refurbished.
My question, wondering if, what options are out there in the used market that would maybe work? And then maybe you could take, so say we a lot for a new, we buy used, we save forty thousand, which allows to go towards another piece of equipment or bunker gear or something, to be able to kind of spread those out as much as possible. Um, and, and so I guess that was a question that, is there opportunity for used that is serviceable and good and would work, um, that's been kept in good condition? Or is the used equipment still nineteen seventy-two equipment that's sitting out there? I mean, is there, is there two thousand equipment, year two thousand equipment that could, could fill in well, save a little money, use that money towards other, other needs?
Sure. The, I'll reference the Aurora Fire Department. I was here a number of months ago to request funds for an engine that they replaced. And I believe that was, Mike, I think is here, or Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that was a two thousand model engine that they replaced. And they replaced a nineteen, you know, whatever with a, with a model year two thousand. I'm sure they're out there, um, used equipment, and I'll, and I'll speak to the equipment market in general. In the last two years, it's been ridiculous. Um, I, I don't know what's out there for used fire apparatus. I'm sure there's some.
Commissioner Pierce.
So the total, I think, if you bring that up again, Stacy, was that two point two million, which is a lot. And I have a, a question for those departments where there was just one thing listed and it was three, four hundred thousand dollars, right? And if, if, um, two point two doesn't work for the commission and we were able to partially fund something, would those departments be able to purchase that item? Or would that, there are rules on when the monies have to be spent on the ARPA funds. So I, I'm curious if, if it's not two point two million that, that departments overall get, well, something less than that working, you guys can figure out how to do that? Or do you understand my question?
I, I do. Um, I believe there's opportunity for us to get creative with some of this, but I also believe that we, you know, scrambled and got estimates and prices from, from multiple vendors to put this together per your request. And, um, there's ways for us to get creative with, with things. And these are estimates and timelines. And I don't know the exact timeline on when this money has to be spent or allocated. Um, the apparatus or the, I'll just say the, the truck market is extremely tight with availability. If we ordered, just say we were allocated these funds today and ordered these trucks today, we probably won't even see the, the chassis to start building the trucks, most of these, for over two years. And I guess to Commissioner Krogman's question too, as far as used, I'm sure there's used apparatus out there, but I, I don't know, um, you know, without us doing a, a great amount of research and, and searching and contacting distributors and vendors.
I guess I'd like to.
But, but there's ways that we could get creative if we had to. Um, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'd like to comment. I had a couple of calls from the fire chiefs in, on this request list. Um, a couple of them are the ones that requested a full apparatus. And they said any funding would be well. Um, I know each of the departments feel that if they could get this apparatus, um, I know White, the, the one that is replacing will be repurposed to a water truck. And we also have, uh, um, an old fire six by that came from the government many, many years ago, which we'll be replacing. Um, as for breathing apparatuses, bunker gear, all those have expiration dates. Basically, they are disposable once they've reached that date. A lot of departments are still using some of that stuff. The, the apparatus stuff are, the apparatus, I think Chris Albert from Elkton explained to me, I don't know if you'd like to come forward and explain Elkton's situation. He called me and asked me what they should do. And I said, we're taking your requests shortly. Um, they're working on a truck right now. But, um, as for used stuff, um, like Aurora, they just purchased a truck. Um, what year was that? And then, you know, it fits your needs. Um, I know what Mr. Krogman's saying, but, uh, there's also, there's a timeline there too, that, uh, once a truck is sold, it just, uh, do you replace it or not? It's just, uh, one of those deals. Uh, we have, I think, uh, a lot of the money, if we put forward to these departments, will be used for the, uh, one-time deal. And they'll be able to fund other things with their yearly, yearly funding down the road. They'll be able to do some bunker gear, some other equipment that they need, uh, you know, your generators, your other stuff. So, uh, I think the need is there. Like I've always said, uh, you gotta remember, these guys are volunteers. They're working on, uh, you know, budgets that are quite restrictive. And, uh, I, we need them. I mean, whatever your fire department is rated at, that, that trickles down to your insurance, how much you pay for your premiums on your insurance. I mean, I support them a hundred percent. Chris, would you like to explain Elkton's situation?
Um, yeah, for Elkton, um, when this all rolled out, we, we met with a vendor and they, they had a truck available. And, um, just it, um, you know, we, we had planned to replace this truck in like five years, um, on our schedule. But because of the opportunity for funding and for the future price increases of what we were told, that the vendors will be increasing on products from anywhere, we've heard numbers anywhere from ten to thirty percent increase on trucks that are rolling off the line now. Now, this just happened to be the vendor we reached out to, happened to have a truck available. And, but if you're gonna, like these guys are talking about from different vendors, they can't even get chassis. I mean, it's a two-year build type thing. Um, so with what we were looking at and the numbers that we put together, um, that was the full request. Um, we have some money to, that we have put away. We could, we could potentially do a cost share on that number. Um, so whatever, whatever we could get, you know, um, we could, we could work out, you know?
I guess I have a question for your, and your mic. You'll have this packed on the night here. The date, when they're saying it might take two years before you'd see a truck, the date by which the monies have to be spent is what again?
Has to be appropriated by the end of, uh, December twenty twenty-four. And it has to be expended by December of twenty twenty-six.
We, we do have time.
Yep.
Just a couple of comments. Larry and I both met with fire departments a, a couple of months back. And there's a lot of confusion. of confusion about, what do we ask for and what do we need? And one of the concerns I made that night was safety for all the volunteers that are working with these departments, and that included all the personal gear and anything with equipment that was unsafe or anything that we could use one-time money for to upgrade and, and make it an honor to work for the fire department, not only because I want to do that, but because I've got a good equipment, I'm going to go home with my family afterwards. So it's, it's a big deal to me to make sure we really upgrade anything that's required as far as safety requirements. The, the thing we'd asked for was, it was almost like, give us a wish list of anything and everything that you think you could use or would need, that would be one-time funding, one-time requests. And I think you've done an even better job than that. A lot of this is not a wish list, but it's a calculated list as far as, as you said, if we had a piece of equipment for five years, if we got one-time money, maybe we can move this up a little bit and take care of this issue at this particular point in time. I don't expect that when we get down to looking at our ARPA funds, that we'll probably have enough requests that we probably won't be able to fund the entire request here. So at that point in time, we may have each of you come in and get, get this saved, as we look at maybe a little pared-down list, so to speak. But I wanted to see that the total requests were, you did a great job, I love this. Is it high? Maybe not. But at the same time, we will have a lot of other funding requests coming in. And, but I want to give you everything that you need. That was my basic request from you guys, and you did a fabulous job. I know this was difficult. You had to do a lot of research on cost materials and everything else, and obviously, these costs will change in the next year or two. Anyway, but please be ready for us as we get to the ARPA discussion, if we have to have more information from you. We'll ask for it, and you can provide it because you've already did all the homework. So I'd love to say, yeah, we're going to give you all of it, I just can't at this point. We may be able to at the end if we've got extra funds, we'll see what happens here. We don't have all the ARPA requests in yet, but they're coming in. So again, I want to thank you all for the hard work you did, Dave, leading the group. It was a tough situation to do that, and you worked through it really well, I think.
Do you guys have an idea about when you guys will have an answer for us on, on this, as some of us are possibly have already maybe committed to buying equipment or trucks at this, I mean?
I think in your particular case, you've got something located and you want to purchase, so you've got a price point you want, a guarantee you can have right now if you do it? I think we could probably move that part of the request. This isn't going to probably be done as one ballpark for everybody, it's probably still going to be done by individual departments. Maybe we'd move years ahead if you've already got a purchase order that you can execute that we need to look at quicker.
I know the, the plan is to meet as a commission to discuss the total ARPA allocation and the requests that have been made to date on August thirtieth. I would anticipate that probably the first half of those dollars may be allocated in September. Is that fair? I think there are enough things that are kind of pressing needs, and it's been allocated in sort of two tranches to us, and I think the goal would probably be to allocate that out, or at least a portion of that, maybe the first half out yet this year, probably. So it may be that a portion gets funded this year and a portion happens in the next six months or something like that. I think it depends a little bit on how quickly folks get us what we need in order to make those decisions and get it finalized. I think probably a few of us would like to make sure it's done, it's all allocated yet in twenty twenty-two, but it sort of depends on where we're sitting. Does that help? Sort of?
Well, I mean, for our particular case, I mean, we've already signed a purchase agreement on this, on our unit.
For most of you, when you put in an order for a new truck, it takes two years to build, are you putting a fifty percent deposit in in year one, and then the rest upon delivery? Or how does that typically work in terms of payment schedule?
So for ours, we will take possession of this truck in October.
Super.
Our.
Okay. For any of those new builds?
I can't speak for all of the departments. I know for us in Volga, the trucks that we've purchased over the years, we've, we've replaced an engine in a rescue in the last ten years. We have not put a deposit down on those apparatus.
Okay.
I can't speak to what vendors are doing now in the current climate that we're in with the low availability of apparatus, but in the past, we have not put a deposit down.
Okay.
It's been a verbal and a written contract.
Okay. So in some cases, if those, if those funds are allocated but not expended, that may also make some difference too. So that works great. Other questions by the commissioners? Or comments in general?
Is there any more of these requests that our time is of the essence? Because obviously, the Elkton request is, is the other communities, are they something that is already signed a purchase agreement, are already planning on spending? Or is this still more future, we would, if we got the funds, we would order it?
Not to my knowledge, but I think there's some urgency to at least get orders placed before the calendar year starts over with new price increases. As Chris mentioned, ten to twenty percent is not unheard of per year, especially the last two, three years with vehicle apparatus chassis increases.
I believe, Chris, you said that the company actually offered you a finance option also?
Yeah. I think, I don't have that number in front of me. There was three options. One was like the ten and twelve year were both at, I think, three point nine for ten to twelve years, and then fifteen years was three point nine four, and that number was based off of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Other questions?
I think that's an example of maybe a little bit of the urgency with this, to finance a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar unit for ten to twelve years is, I mean, nobody finances a vehicle for that long. That's kind of the environment that we have to live in as far as fire departments and stuff. The machines we finance with our local bank get drug out, and that's just strictly based on the funds that we have available to, you know, that our cities or whatever, or our clubs have to allocate to payments every year. And it's unfortunate that we have to stretch stuff out that long, that's just, that's, unfortunately, that's how it is. So to at least try to get some of this stuff done before the first of the year to offset some January one price increases, I think would be a huge deal.
Anything else?
Make a comment?
Yeah, Marty?
You know, the demands on local fire departments, I'm sure that all the fire departments calls for service have increased, especially in a dry season, you know, Baylor fires, combine fires. Also, there's more demands on local fire departments that they didn't have to, they just don't fight fires. They're out on the interstate protecting law enforcement, and Bruce was out a couple weeks ago, and we were looking for a small child. So it's more to it. They're even, they have to train for scenarios with active shooter stuff, so it's not just... So, and first responders is the big thing, making sure they got the right equipment for first responders. And I try to give some, some outdated of my stuff to some of the fire departments, you know? So they're getting outdated stuff to put on their trucks and that are going out for service every time they get a call. So whatever support the commission can give, I don't know how we'd survive without these local fire departments, so.
I'd just like to say too, appreciate on most of these requests, you have tanker on there, and the last couple of weeks, I was actually out on a couple of these fires and, and the mutual aid agreement that's in place, we know, you know how important it is to have water there, and I mean, that's, that's all these guys that are rolling to each other's fires and helping each, helping each department out, so.
We've put an emphasis, especially the last couple of years, to the Brookings PD dispatch on, if there's a rural fire, tone out that department and then tone out everybody else. And that way, we at least get water coming with tankers. If they don't need us, they turn us around. But in the, in the instance that I referenced in White on July thirtieth, that was a scenario where they just tone everybody out, and luckily or unluckily, I guess, how you look at it, but they needed water, and we, and they had twelve, fifteen thousand gallons of water coming from all over the county to aid, you know, that department. A majority of our requests in here are, would greatly benefit that. And to Marty's point, the call volume has definitely increased, and I commend you all for putting money toward mental health because there's definitely a need. A majority of the call increase that we've all experienced is due to mental health. Our call volume ten years ago in Volga was thirty-five to fifty calls, and now we're at a hundred and fifty per year. And not all, you know, EMS or mental health related, but definitely a need for some funding for that end of it too.
And I'd just like to say, my husband was a volunteer for the Brookings Fire Department for over twenty years, and I know the sacrifices you all make to attend the fires and come out and do the training, and it's just a huge amount of work, and just want to thank you for doing all of that. And I do support funds, I just don't know two point two million, but I do support funds to the fire departments.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else?
We're good.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah. So I think we're going to move on to our nine-thirty scheduled agenda items, since it's not a public hearing. So we've got Jeff Schaefer with us to discuss legislative audit from our fiscal year twenty twenty legislative audit review.
Good morning, everyone. Again, my name's Jeff Schaefer, I'm with Department of Legislative Audit. This is your fiscal and compliance audit for twenty twenty has been completed, and it's in final stages and ready to be released. This is just the final exit interview with, addressing any questions you may have and any findings that we might have to bring to your attention. I'd like to focus it on the management letter, you all provided a copy of that, and particularly to the second page, there's a couple of items noted in the middle of the page there. I'd like to address, if we could, the second item first. I'll just kind of jump into it here. The lack of internal control over the process resulted in the motor V fund, key winning material unclaimed balance. I provided an informational sheet to you, and what it was is just to kind of facilitate the discussion is what the motor V fund is, a custodial fund that should clear thirty days subsequent to the month end. All funds received in that fund should be cleared within that period of time. At the end of our audit period, we had a, we looked at the revenues collected or the receipts, inflows collections, and what was dispersed at the end of the year was about five hundred and thirty-eight thousand. However, the cash balance in that fund was one million, five hundred and twenty-four thousand. So we did a little investigating, and we come across, kind of come up with some items that would cause the unclaimed balance. And first of all, I guess before you get excited is that when we were all said and done, no money's missing, didn't change your cash balancing grand total at all, it's just where it was at, was in the wrong spots. So what we did was, we had, there's a kind of list of things that we did here, there was an adjustment that was posted backwards, and one thing was receded wrong, and essentially, we need, we posted adjustments, moving nine hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars out of that fund. Fortunately for the Road and Bridge Fund, about eight hundred thousand is supposed to go to, it should be in the Road and Bridge Fund. So that's where that's going to go, some to the general fund and a lot of it to a few other agency funds, custodial funds. And the reason I wanted to talk about that was that that builds on the fact, on number one, the reporting errors comment, because correcting these things, the large amount of cash balances, we moved around to custodial funds, your government-wide, and your fund statements, three different spots on your financials, led to a reporting errors comment. And that's what we'll go to. So at any point in time, if any questions on any of this, please feel free. If you have any questions on the informational sheet I provided with the, on the motor V fund? With that, the preparation of the annual financial report in accordance with modified cash basis of accounting resulted in material reporting errors. This is further discussed in current audit finding number two thousand twenty dash oh oh one. That's under this draft comment that you got here. And I'll kind of read through part of it here, it says, "The county's internal control structure should be designed to provide for the preparation of the annual reports, which includes having an adequate system for recording and processing entries materially, material to the annual financial report being audited, in accordance with the modified cash basis of accounting. Deficiencies in the county's internal control structure for the preparation of the modified cash basis of accounting annual financial report resulted in material reporting errors." Now, I can go through these, they look, they look large, and they are, but like I said, it was reclassed and moving money from where it was to where it should be. So the net statement, the net position, you know, there's nine hundred, or seven hundred ninety-seven thousand, that's a much of the cash that was in your motor V fund that should have been in your governmental funds. You know, some of that, if you go down farther, it'll show that forty-seven thousand, that should have been in the general fund, and seven hundred and seventy-six thousand should have been in the, in the Road and Bridge Fund, and so on and so forth. I could go through all those, but it was, it's, I don't know if you feel like I'd like, you'd like me to have you to go through those, or if you have any question on any one of them, you'd like to have me go through those?
I'd like to go through them.
I would, yeah.
Okay.
Can I ask a question before we start? Because I would just like to know the answer to this. Do you think the problems with what was going on at that time was the switch from accrual to cash basis? Is that what, because we've really had very excellent audits in the past.
Right. Actually, what this is, is I'll tell you what, as we investigated it, there was a two thousand seventeen, a receipt for four hundred and forty-six thousand dollars from motor V money came in, instead of going into the, it's a quarterly motor V apportionment from state, it should have went into the motor V, or Road and Bridge Fund. It was put into the motor V fund. In two thousand nineteen, a journal entry deportioned the money from the motor V fund was posted backwards, and instead of moving the money out, it actually took money from the other funds and put it back in here. And so it was just really two separate things. And then there's one little thing, that throughout the time, there's a what's called dealer online, and that's kind of done in the normal apportionment, it's done through, it's online, and it goes through peer, and then peer sends out the results of their collections to the county. Well, that money was sent out here, but it was never dispersed, and it was never big money, you know, it could be a hundred dollars, five hundred, fifteen hundred dollars a month, or maybe nothing. And so that money, through time, it had never been dispersed, was accumulating and growing in the, in there. And so that has probably a forty-five or fifty thousand dollar balance that should be dispersed. So we kind of come down through the whole process of, when the assault's ended, we'll have it down to zero, and then we're recommending, we've recommended to Lori and her folks there that, that at the end, month end, you just monitor your, all your custodial funds to make sure that all the receipts for that month were properly cleared within thirty days, you know, as required by the law or whatever, as they should be, and that's just a good checks and balance. In this case here, it had accumulated a balance. Now, you've had several audits since then, and that balance was, we were looking at what was clearing in the months, and we just pick a random sample, and in the months we were looking at, what was, what you were collecting was being dispersed. It was probably on, we should have been checking that big balance, and staffing changes and turnover and stuff like that. I can't look at every item, so that accumulated probably under our radar, which we, but as we were looking at it, we go, we got to do something with this, it shouldn't be this. And so that's where we are now. So I'll take a little bit of the fault with that, so, but, but we did find out what it was, and it wasn't a series of things, it was just basically two big things, and just a little, one little thing that hadn't been dispersed, you know, it grew, so.
And we now have a handful of operational procedures that will make sure that that's not an issue in the future because now we're aware of what the issue was.
Right.
And can go forward with a better set of habits potentially to make sure that we've got that kind of end of month.
It's just, it's just human error. All you have to do is at the end of the month, if it's, just take what your balances are, did what we took in, did that clear in the subsequent 30 days?
Yep.
Should that be, you know, we get a packet on the financials every time we meet and should that be a report that the commission has an opportunity to take a look at? Should that be added to what we're?
I, I don't know, I mean, it's, I don't think it's, I don't know if there has to be a report they actually asked to made. If they could just check it, just check if there would just be a perusing those balances within the system, I don't think it requires a formal report, if you will. Okay? So I guess we'll go start here at the top, it says cash and cash equivalents were understated by 797,000. That's the, this is, this is under, your statements have government wide, which is your whole entity wide and it puts all your funds together. And then there's the fund statements, which shows your general fund and your road and bridge and all your marriage funds and your other governmental funds over here and then your custodial funds. The reason we have so many different places where this number was accounted for because it was accounted for in the custodial funds, which the motor V fund is part of. And your general, in your government wide, which is all of them combined and in your fund statements, which is broken down by your general fund, your road and bridge. So these numbers are stated in here three different times because it had to be adjusted in three different places. So while these numbers look large and they're restated in different statements, in different words or different statements in three different places. So the 797,000 was the cash effect on your, on your government wide statements. There's another one there, it's just the 1,172,000 was cash. We showed a negative balance for cash and cash equivalents and we had the whole entire balance as the bond proceeds, your bond, well, it should have been netted, it should, it was, you don't have a negative cash there, it should be the net of the two. So it was just, the other three, the next thing is your restricted net position and so on and so forth. That has to do with Gatsby 54, it's just how you recognize your equity. You as commissioners can assign money, you know, for different things and so on and so forth and this is accounting for your assignments that you chose for, like for applying for next year's budget and so on and so forth in a manner in which it was stated in your minutes. And so some of it, sometimes that may be, but maybe posted backwards or something like that. So we just went with how you assigned the balances, which we were aware of, that any decisions you may have made for assignments of fund balance. So that's really all the last four are. Statement of activities, that's just that your inflows and outflows, your activity for your government wide statements as a whole and that just talks about the, the one large number on top of there, 30 million. You were accrual based and you moved to cash. So we have to start with our accrual based number. And we do that, take out capital assets, debt, this, this, OPEB, or your, you don't have OPEB here, but your compensated absences, we take all that stuff out, going back to a cash basis, that's what the 30 million dollar adjustment is there. And the reason it was necessary is we just, the financial statements we're prepared with, boom, right to cash, well, I can't do that, I have to start with the prior audit ending and that number looks huge, but it is really insignificant in that fashion. So it's just one way, it's just another way we had to start with our prior audit ending. This one here, the next one is if you, that's your COVID money, the 1,799 was reported as a general government and is actually public safety program revenues because it was, you were awarded that money for public safety, the first responder stuff. Interest on long-term debt. I believe the principal portion of your bond, your payments were all recorded as interest on long-term debt and that portion of the payment is recorded in the function, that line item is just for interest only. We go down to under item C down there now and these are your governmental funds, this is how they affected each of the government funds. So if you look on top, it says general fund cash and cash equivalents was understated by 47,000. That's your share, that's the general fund share of the motor V distribution. You're assigned fund balance, again, that's just a reclassifying fund balance according to the board's wishes. Road and Bridge, the cash, cash equivalents were understated by 776,000, that's motor V correction. Again, the next two months, just the changing of assignments. Your restricted fund balance was understated a large amount there because all of a sudden now we're moving motor V money over and that is restricted for only road and bridge. And by your policy, you normally spend your restricted dollars first, but we're moving these in at the end of the year, so they hadn't been spent, so those are restricted dollars. So they'll be spent, you know, next this year. And so let's say we go down there, courthouse, courthouse building fund, unassigned, the assigned fund balance was understated, that's just a reclassifying of fund balance. Detention center capital projects and capital, oh, this has to do with the negative cash balance was shown on one line item and bond proceeds on the next one. They just netted the two, we showed the full amount of the bond proceeds, which should have been netted the two. So we go down here to item D. This is the general fund, beginning fund balance was understated by 25,000. That was a change from going from GAAP to cash basis. There's one here, property tax, there was one instance we noted where a, the TIF payment should have come out of a debt service fund that you have here and the tax, the tax revenues went into the TIF fund, but the payment came out of the general fund. So we corrected that, moved that around. The next one was simply a reclass entry, moving it from other expenditures to state's attorney's fees for the 656,000. Road and Bridge beginning fund balance was understated by 776,000, that's, we made a prior period adjustment, that's your cash to motor V. Detention center capital project funds were understated by, expenditures were understated by 135,000, that's your bond issuance costs. That was put in the debt service fund. It should have been recognized in your detention center capital project fund with the bond proceeds and the netting of all of those ends up with your entire bond proceeds. You go with the face value of your bonds minus all your issuance costs and so on and so forth, boom, that is your bond proceeds that you received. That's all that was. Debt service expenditures were overstated by 113,000. I think there's that or capital projects, I think too much was put on the debt service line item, it should have been up under your capital project or building expense. Didn't change cash, so. And there was another one here, there was a 4391, there was money distributed for 24/7 sobriety testing and it came out of your general fund, but there is a custodial fund set up for it and the money should have came out of there. So we changed that and then changed the balance in the custodial fund. And then on the second page. Okay. This is just coming down to here, items E and F are simply talking about the reduction of fiduciary net position, which your custodial, your motor V fund is a fiduciary fund, it's taking the money out of there. So we're moving it from there and putting it in the other places there. So that's all that is. The effect was inaccurate, incomplete information may be presented to the users of the financial report and the cause, this county does not have an internal control system designed to provide for the preparation of the annual reports in accordance with the modified cash basis of accounting. And we recommend the county strengthen internal controls over financial reporting. As you see on the bottom there is that you have the option responding to this comment, it'll be included in there. I guess if you, if you choose to do so, if we could get something from you, you know, like I say, once I call peer, the report's ready to go, but if you need some time or would like to do something, it doesn't have to be anything, if you choose not to, that's also a response. If you just say that the county chose not to respond or you want to say something like the county intends to post all the journal entries required, bring the county to the counting records, whatever you want to say, you know, up to you.
As to what those modified internal control procedures should be?
Yes. Well, we talked about one, the biggest one for this is that, is watching those clearing funds. You know, and if it was receded, if something was receded to a fund by an error that didn't get cleared out of there, there's probably, it was either done or receded or a journal entry, you know, and if they don't clear at the end of each month, you know, if you look at this, the majority just dealt with the fact that that, there was money in those funds, it shouldn't have been in other funds. If that's, you look at the majority of this was affected that. So if they just, what, monitor those balances at the end of each month end, it should, should be sufficient.
Would it be helpful if we put in for a review of responsible officials, something similar to the county is going to implement the internal control systems recommended by the auditor for the?
That, if you, that's fine.
Yeah.
If you could draft something like that up and just email it to me or something, something like that, that'd be great and we, and we'll just pop it in there, so.
Do you take care of that Stacy or does Laura take care of that or who does that?
I can sure come up with something. And looking at these two, I know back when like Stacy and I sat over in the courthouse, these were things that we checked at that time. So they are, they are things that actually, if you check them, are easy to find and correct. I don't know where in that timeframe these were being done at, I've been sitting here trying to think whose desk, where, where was this being done and I'm not exactly sure if there was just a timeframe that nobody was doing these maybe, I don't know. I can't speak to that, but they are things that could easily be caught.
Monthly. And just so that I'm clear, really what we're talking about is things were put in the wrong categories on, on the financial reports. And then when it's all put in the bright spot, we're not missing any money, there's not anything that was spent improperly, we just have to get our rows lined up right.
Essentially, that's exactly right. We're moving it to the right fund and giving it, yeah. By moving that, that one journal entry, when we moved it, you know, instead of apportioning out to the funds it should have went to, we did it in reverse, it caused three of the custodial funds to have large negative balances, which seemed, what's causing this? Well, if you did a journal entry backwards, you take that money out of there and it's, it's just human error. And so just looking at the end of the, you know, at the month end, just to check some balance like that.
Will that type of problem be less likely to occur under the cash basis than the accrual basis?
It should be, it won't have any effect. You apportion that motor V money the same as you would any other time, it's the same.
Other questions?
I have one other question, not, not on this particularly, but I'm always worried about internal controls and was there anything besides making sure that we have all that matchup on that 30-day thing for internal controls that, that you would be recommending that we look at? You spent quite a lot of time downstairs, so.
Well, we have some other things that we've mentioned to them, you know, but a lot of times they're not, we don't think they're important enough to bring to the board, we kind of make that call on the big stuff we bring to you, but if there's little bitty things, we just talk about stuff like that. I, I don't really have a, I think the one thing that I recommend, most of the place I go to is a, a place where things could go wrong really fast is journal entries and moving things around and stuff like that. So I just, I just tell anybody that has, have a question on something, just call and we'll come up with the best way to go with it, you know? And that happens at a lot of places and stuff like that, but as far as additional internal control findings or deficiencies, I don't have any.
Have all the changes here been made?
I don't believe they've been posted as of yet. They've been, they're on your 2020's report, so we'll have to make those changes going in 21 going forward, but I don't believe they've been posted to the, the general ledger yet, but.
That will affect what we have right now, cash on hand and our balances.
It won't, it won't affect, it'll affect your fund, in each fund.
Balance, not the cash we have, but just where the funds are actually at.
Yes, correct, yeah.
And that's not done yet, we'll see changes of that.
I don't believe it's done yet. When I talked with Jen, it was not yet, so. And I would, and I expect that I would assist with that if they'd like, so.
Well, and I think that's an important point because when we're looking at things like Road and Bridge Fund and fund balance and trying to spend fund balance, we want to know what that fund balance is accurately so we know how much there is to spend.
Especially the restricted funds for there that we want to, you know, if there's more money going into restricted funds and we want to make sure we use those.
Right now, I think the number that we had for the Road and Bridge, where was it at here again? I believe that, oh, 776,000 minimum. There's some, a portion of that that goes, that's from the, what's called dealer online, which is somewhere around 50,000, a portion of that will go to the general fund, largest portion will go to the Road and Bridge Fund and a smaller portions will go to the 5% and 16% custodial funds.
And I'm just, I mean, we have that meeting on the 30th and that's more ARPA funds type of stuff, but I think we'll probably take a look at what our funds are too. And I mean, is there a chance that we can have that all updated by that 30th meeting?
We can work on some of it today if you'd like, yeah.
Okay, that'd be great, thank you.
So when we make those changes today and we're in 2022 and this is our 2020 audit, so we go back and we change our journal entries for 2020 to correct them. So what kind of impact will that, if any, have on our 21 audit that you'll start working on tomorrow?
Well, I've already made those changes to mine, so mine are going to flow through in that, so we're going to try and make those balances, will be in the right funds from 20 going forward. So they'll be in our beginning fund balance, so it will be, we just could get, we'll make, we'll account for it in 21's, but it'll be on, it'll be as of now in 22 where the cash will be.
And it won't negatively impact our 21 audit or our 22 audit?
It should not.
Okay.
Other questions? Great.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on. Item R, discussion of rural access infrastructure funds. So we have discussion and possible action to approve culvert replacement applications. So I think let's look at the township grant info and then Oakwood and Eureka Township have a handful of requests.
I was hoping Brian was going to be here today to be part of this discussion, but.
I did, I did talk to Brian this morning, he has no, he did go out and look at all the requests and had no problem with any of them.
Yeah, I think there's a bigger discussion first though, before we get into the individual requests. Ryan and Larry and Brian and I met last week to discuss the rural access infrastructure program as total and kind of looked at what that means for, for our townships and some things that, that we found, that we, that we found with that were. The biggest thing right now is that five-year plan that needs to be done by each of the townships in order to qualify for these funds has to be to the county by the end of this month. We thought it was October. October is actually when the applications to spend the money are due, but the five-year plans in statute are due to us by the end of, by the end of August. The other thing that we noted too is townships, they have to impose an annual property tax levy of 50 cents per thousand or they have to have an opt-out. And so in looking at that, I think when I kind of went through that, you, this shows that. So here's their levy for 2022, their levy amount, and then if they. Here's their levy for 2022, their levy amount, and then if they have an opt out. So right now, really, the only townships that don't qualify. For the funds based on those two things are Argo, Oak Lake, Preston, Richland. And Sherman Townships because their levy is under the 50 cents and they don't have an opt out. So overall, I mean, with 23 townships, we're doing pretty good. I think there's, you know, most of them would qualify for the funding. The biggest concern that we have is is getting information out. For them to get these five year plans done and returned to us. Brian and I, and then also Brandon with our GIS specialist, we were working. The end of last week on getting. The mapping information that that was put in to the state's system. To get a list of the culverts by township and then a map of them as well, so we can get, try to get that information out to the townships. So they can look and they have that information then to base their five year plans on that information that we submitted. So we're working on that. I need to touch base with Brandon. On where he is with that, but I think he was trying to come up with both. The list of location and then with all of the information that's attached, the condition and whatnot, and then as well as. A map with all of those locations.
Basically prioritizing which culverts were the worst location and how they qualified within the.
So they would need to prioritize them.
Right.
Within their five year plan.
Right.
The other thing with the rural access infrastructure funds is it's an 80 20 split. So townships would be responsible for 20%. With the program that we have with our local dollars, with our general fund dollars, it's 50 50 with the county. We don't have as, the other thing with the rural access infrastructure, it can't be on a minimum or no maintenance road. And they. I had a thought and then it escaped me, but. So with our dollars anyway, we have, we have that 50 50 cost share. Oh, it's the size of the culvert. That's the other thing. It has to be the 16 square feet. Under the state program. That's the minimum. It has to be the 16 square feet or larger where with our program, with our dollars that we have set aside. We we kind of opened it up this year to any size culvert. So what you have in front of us with all of that information, knowing the cost share, the requirements and things like that, we did have some requests come in. 10 of them from Oakwood, they're all very similar sized culverts, but 10 of them, this is. Brian explained that it's kind of, it's the money, the water from oak, Oakwood going downstream. And then Eureka has a couple of pretty significant projects, kind of two larger projects that they submitted for. With the 50 50 cost share, in my staff report. The total costs, if we if we approved all 12 of these, it's just shy of 93,500. We have just about 83,000 yet budgeted, so we're about $10,000 short in our, in our general fund. Budget if we were to approve all of these today, based on that 50 50 cost share with the county. And then there was some discussion on, you know, would it make sense for a township to wait? And get their five year plan in and then take advantage of the 80 20 because I believe all of these 12, I believe would qualify for state funding as well. But it's whether or not you want to wait to get them done. And then. There's also the issue now this year, if we approve these, in order to get them paid out, the project has to be done yet this summer. Brian has to go out, verify that it's done, and then we issue our 50% back to them. We're running, we're halfway through August already, and I don't know if. The townships have culverts on hand and access to culverts even right now, if that's even possible to get a project done yet this year. I don't know that. So there's a lot of kind of balls up in the air with all of this, but. So, yeah, I mean, it's. I think the most pressing thing is, I mean, we can make some decisions on these these requests today, but I think the biggest thing is trying to get the information out to townships. That there's this deadline, the end of the month, to get their five year plans turned into us.
Who put the deadline on for the end of the month?
The legislature. It's it's in statute.
Is there any way we could ask for another month?
Could you pull that statute? Because I had that exact same thought. Let's see what that statute says.
I have, I've got all of the statutes here printed up. I can. Let's see here.
Is Oakwood, is Oakwood and Eureka, have they got, does anybody have a five year plan? Do these two count?
Nobody's done a five year plan yet.
All right, so.
Projects, if they want to go for the the funds from the state, it has to be done next year. If it's not going to be done this year, they're getting prepared to do those.
Right. So my question is, is that they've got this all prepared except for the five year plan and the tax opt out? If, then they'll get 80% paid, so it might be advantageous for them to wait. But have we talked to at least these two that have proactively at least got their requests in for us?
That was the, that was kind of the situation we were talking about was, you know, that. We contact them. First of all, we got to get the five year plan because we didn't know it needed to be done by August 31st. That's the first thing there. Because none of them would qualify if they don't have their five year plan.
Right.
So we got to get that done. The next is, is do they qualify? And and both townships do qualify for the program. If they get their five year done. If they wanted to go through with our program, try to get it done this year, one, we're not sure they'll get culverts in time to do it. But I think the biggest reason to hold off is it would almost save them 20 to 30,000 by going their share only being 20% rather than 50% with ours. And so I think that makes sense to say these, you would qualify. Let's wait for this, for this money because this is what it's for. You know, we were a little bit ahead of the. Curve when we put this 100,000 in a couple of years ago. And now the state is doing that, so it doesn't make sense for us to double fund the same project. So the state's going to come in and give us an 80% towards it rather than us spending our funds. We can maybe use our funds next year for culverts that aren't covered in the state program. Stuff under 16 square feet. So at our meeting with Larry and I and Brian and Stacy, that's kind of the process we thought we might want to work towards. And then have that conversation with these two townships that put this here and say, look, this is what we suggest you do. Because it will save you in your township a pretty substantial amount of money, you know, 20,000 plus is a good amount of money.
Yeah, Oakwood would save. By math, about $35,000 with 20% versus the 50%. And Eureka would be looking at about 21, give or take. 21,000 in savings if they wait to do the 20% rather than the 50% cost share.
And the fact of not being able to possibly get.
If you can't even get a culvert.
Can't get, you know, we're trying to figure that out, I think.
I had a conversation with the manager out in True North Steel. Beginning of the year, they had trouble getting culverts out. They were short staffed. They're now at full staff. They could probably still get culverts yet this fall, but. Like Ryan just said, the advantage by waiting till next year, getting their five year plan in place, making sure that they're taxing themselves. To qualify for everything, that's that's more important. We need to get the information out to them. I know LTAP talked to Brian, I believe Thursday morning. And I think they got a spreadsheet that'll help them along pretty good. It'll actually categorize which of them culverts that should be prioritized and put in the five year plan. And they'll have a generic five year plan that they can all just fill out and enter into the state. We might need to have a similar meeting we had last year or by mail. It's, I. I'm not sure how we wanted to handle that.
And that's the information that I, like I said, I have Brandon putting together a spreadsheet with each township. With their their culvert, the pertinent culvert information that they need in the map. So we can get that information out. Fairly quickly, but I don't, I mean, I, the problem is, it's already the 16th of August and these are due. And there's, there is a form. Just a pretty, a pretty simple form to fill out to complete the five year plan. But it's just getting that information out to the townships at this point because we're on such a short timeline now. So I think it might.
That request for those five year plans, that's for the entire balance of the program? If they don't get it done this year, there's not a next year allocation?
Every year, every year, they will have to submit a five year plan. And then they submit an application by October 31st, and then the commission will. Decide by January 15th which projects. Qualify.
My game in this is basically if we're going to save our money and have them save more money by progressing, and they don't get the five year plan in. For this request, even even these here, if they don't get it in. There would be next year that they could apply again.
Correct.
And they have their five year plan. So you said, especially if we do nothing, we haven't really. Done nothing. We've saved some money for everybody in the long run, right? It's just going to take longer to get it done. And are any of these culverts in critical condition in the next year or two?
That would be a question for Brian to, because he's not here.
Seems to me that we just delay everything and tell them, if you want it next year, you got to have it here by August, end of August, your five year plan. If you choose not to do that, we're going to not. Honor any other requests until you've done your five year plan anyway, as part of our request, I think, in the future, is to have that plan. We didn't have that as far as our, our $100,000, but we we request that they have their five year plan, and that automatically makes them eligible. If they do the opt out and they they. Agree to do that. We have some townships that didn't, that. Didn't qualify because of the opt out. Now, if they want to come back and request out of the 100,000 because they didn't do the opt out, then we can, we can look at those separately. Not not favorably, but.
I mean, when we had a meeting last year, the state, when the gal gave the presentation, she. She expressed to them that they had to have that five year plan.
Yeah.
And it was going to be due this October. Now, they do have, I mean, they have come up with this form that make, going to make it easier for them.
Right.
It's just getting it to them and getting, get them to fill it out.
Do we have that?
It's very similar to what the county does to get our projects, our bridge projects. We have to have our five year plan and, you know.
And I think that's what they were doing.
That LTAP's recommended.
The form, I do have the form. I I don't. Know that I can access it here quickly, but I do have the form. It's, it's pretty simple.
And the stuff where we did our study, you know, where we went and plugged in all the information in the culverts, right? How much of that one through six is in the data that we've already done? One or more maps showing.
That's all there. That's all there. And that's what we want to give them because we have that information and that's what I have, like Brandon, working on. Is we get a spreadsheet that has all of this information and a map showing where all of those culverts are located.
So number one, they've got, number two is the location width and length of each small structure. It's on there. So they could just attach what we send them and say, see attached on this first five year plan, right?
They just want to. For instance, the one that I looked at, Argo Township, we kind of ran a trial one maybe last Thursday. They have, say, 25 to 30 culverts. So they're going to have to, in that five year plan, prioritize what, if any, and Argo's maybe a bad example because they don't qualify for the program based on their opt out, but. They, each township's going to have to take that information and then decide. Which ones are their priority? Because they're not going to send in a request, an application to fix all 35 of their culverts. They're going to maybe take the worst five, for instance. So and maybe some will have more than that.
So is there any reason on the five year plan, they couldn't attach a copy of the report that we're sending, say, see attached report? It covers one, two, three. Does it talk about load capacity in our report?
Yep.
So it's got number four, and then they just have to say, at least in the upcoming year, that we would like to do this one. They could put. Five years of them on there if they got them, but if they just got one year, then they could move forward for this year.
Yes.
I mean, that.
It is, it's not difficult. I'm not saying that it's difficult. I'm just saying that it's, we're running on a very short timeline right now.
And number six, is there anything in number six, additional items as prescribed by the Department of Transportation?
Not that I'm aware of, that I'm aware of. So do we need phone calls and certified mail? Like tomorrow?
One of the things we talked about was sending a letter to each township and saying, look. You know, these, these, these are the rules that are required by the state to qualify for this, this program. And 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 to each one, you'd say, you would qualify. Based off of what we have there, as long as you get your five year plan done by this amount of time, then you would qualify for next year to make any type of requests. Now, you have to have those in by October 31st. We could outline all that. There will be some of the townships that won't qualify. We've identified those, and that would be in the letter that currently you do not qualify because you do not have at least 50, 50 cents. Product taxes, and you do not have an opt out. That would give them, though, the notice that, so they're not probably going to qualify for next year's stuff because they don't have that. Even if they got the five year plan in, they don't have, but that would give them their chance in March if they want to. Participate in this program, that they may have to get their up to 0.5 or do an opt out. If they feel it's advantageous for them to do that. And that's up to them. It was the same program. Like Commissioner Jensen said, that we had to go through for our road and bridge, that the state required us to have wheel tax, required us to have a five year plan. We're doing the exact same things, but now we're administering it to the townships. It's kind of working its way down, which is 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 fine.
But but in that letter, I think we can say. You know, if you want to apply for money to be received in 23, okay, we have to have it by August 31st. It does, you know, you will be able to update this five year plan next year before August 31st.
Right.
But if you want to apply for, you know, just just to make that clear, that it should be. Not not too difficult. At our township meeting, was it this year or last year? I cannot remember. Where we said, what is the easiest way to make contact with your township when we need quick response? So we've got either emails or we got addresses from the townships because that question was asked. Who who has that information?
I don't think we got, did we get emails?
We may have asked, but I don't know that we got a universal response.
I know.
It's different to each township.
But if we have, for those that said email, and if we've got an email, I mean, we could get that out relatively quick. And if all they've got to do is say, see attached report from the study. And this is the one we want to do now, and we think this is what it'll cost, that's good enough for that, for this year's five year plan.
And I think, though, I think these two townships that had made requests that we're talking about right now.
We should call.
We should call. We should talk to them and say, if you want to get these on, we recommend it because this is going to have savings to you. We need that five year plan in 15 days. And then you can apply for this, same application. There's a different application, I think there's, or is it very similar to this?
It's, the application is pretty simple. It's, it's very similar to our application. I think they used ours as as a template. It's, it's, yeah, asks a lot of the same types of questions and things. It's, but it's very simple.
And I think.
And that's not due till October.
Right. And so, you know, maybe the other townships aren't, you know, aren't ready to go for next year because they don't have any requests. They haven't looked at it yet, but some may be out there. So that letter needs to go out as soon as possible, but I think reaching out to these two townships that obviously have done the work of inspecting their, their culverts and working through it.
And and I think it's important that we make it clear that what they put on this first five year plan doesn't bind them for five years. Okay, they get to change that. So that'll reduce the stress in picking out what they want to do in 23. When do we have to have the $983,000 spent? How long do we have?
I don't.
They said there was going to be three years similar payments. So we're going to get that funding three years, what it was allocated. The reason, back to the townships, if they got to fill out this five year plan, I'm guessing it's going to take them to have a meeting. They advertise a meeting and have it here. We got to start today. And I mean, it's going to be, unless they have one person who say, go ahead and handle it. So that's.
I mean, we've had since instances where we've sent out letters and the letter gets into the township file, whoever gets the letter, they don't even open it until their next meeting. and the letter gets into the township file, whoever gets the letter, and they don't even open it until their next meeting and see what it's all about, so-
Stacy has changed that.
Yeah. Communication sometimes with the townships isn't what it should be, and maybe it's a phone call. Sometimes they change who's responsible, and we never know who's responsible. So, we'll do the best we can, and we'll, I agree, I don't think we approve these today. I think you give them a call and explain the situation. It's not that we're not gonna do it, it's just we're gonna do it smartly.
I think it makes sense for us to use those state funds as much as we can for the savings of the township and for the county both. If there were states willing to do it, we should use the opportunity.
I mean, it's quite a savings to township, just the two townships that applied.
So who's making those phone calls?
Stacy.
Who's making those phone calls, just so that we're not, like, dropping the ball on something?
Townships.
I will visit with Brian to see if he has a contact for that, that he's familiar with. But I think between Brian and I, we can contact them.
Sounds good.
I had a question about our, we got $83,000 left, is that what we set in our $100,000 for this year? And we had some conversation writing back from the Tin County meeting, those of us that were in the vehicle, about the possibility of using some of that $83,000 to up the inventory for culverts that we've got at the highway shop that townships can use. Did I understand that, what happened with that?
I guess my thoughts were that maybe we could use that money to buy culverts now and stockpile them. I'm not sure we have to actually stockpile them here as much as we can pick them up, but we have to pay for them and reserve them. So we've got the culverts on hand, so to speak. And they can then drop them wherever they need to go, rather than pay them to ship them here, and then we have to pay to ship them back out to the site. So there was a program where they allowed you to leave the culvert inventory in here on, you just paid for it. That was a possibility. Go ahead.
Part of the problem for our townships is, you know, we work and we say, "Okay, you gotta spend the money this year", and then they can't get culverts. So if we had the capability of stockpiling some culverts with this money that we've set aside to help the townships, rather than rolling that over to the general fund, I would like us to think about that. If it's possible to have a generic culvert size, I don't know that much.
That was my question.
Yeah.
That's exactly the problem, because each site is different, and the length of culvert is different. It just, the requests from Oakwood Township here, they are all 50-foot, 72-inch culvert. Like I said earlier to Commissioner Bartley, it'd be great if county could buy those culverts. But the majority of the cost for those projects are the culvert price. The culvert price is about $8,000, and the total cost on the whole project is $11,000. It wouldn't even be near our 50-50 split. But, you know, those large culverts, when you get in the end of those deals, they're kind of a specialty deal. The length, and if you arch them or not, that is, you know, a different scenario. But I think culvert availability, after talking with the representative from here on, they're fully staffed now, and he says that they can get a better turnaround on the culverts now than they did last spring, because they are fully staffed, so.
But my question, though, is, are you thinking of expending those for culvert projects that would be under the state program?
No.
Okay, this would be for our $100,000 program. But my thought is, though, if we're gonna do that, and what we're gonna do for maybe next year's $100,000 we're budgeted, our discussion was that we were gonna use that $100,000 for culverts that were not included in the program, so the smaller ones. So if we were to use those, that this money for that, I think we would wanna purchase those smaller ones, have those on hand if that's gonna be an issue, not the ones that stay there. Because you'd hate to say, "Well, we supplied this, you need to reimburse us", and I think that would kinda make it pretty difficult in accounting type of thing, so.
And that would be possible, because the 36 or 48, you can use a band in those situations to extend the length, so. That would be-
Because we're going to have that $83,000 that we have budgeted to work with the culvert project.
And I think if every county is doing this, and they're doing it next year, and the year after that, now, there's gonna be a backlog of a need for culverts. Because all of a sudden, they went from selling 200 to 600 culverts, you know, because of the program. Similar to the federal government money being spent, they spend it everywhere. Now, contractors are so busy, they can't get to all the stuff. That'll probably be the situation here, too.
Any further comments on that?
I think I'll refer to Brian to do a little bit of research on it, and whether we should or should not, and what our costs would be.
Okay. So we're recommending to the two townships that have provided documentation and requests that we're gonna recommend that they wait for the state program, get their five-year plan in. So no action on that today? All right, hearing nothing further, move on to item S, discussion on the FEMA floodplain map. That's an item that I specifically requested, that we chat about. I wanna make sure that the listening public and the commission all know where to access and how to find the information on the draft FEMA floodplain map. I think Stacy's got it up on her computer. If you do a Google search, it is next to impossible to find unless you have the right keyword searching. Because if you just look for floodplain map, Brookings, South Dakota, you're never gonna find it. You won't find the new draft version, anyway. And so if you look for "South Dakota FEMA Risk Map Story Journal Region 8", you will find yourselves with a screen that gives you the opportunity to click on a small map icon. And then you're gonna scroll way down to "South Dakota Risk Map FEMA Region 8". And what this tool allows you to do is to look at the sort of before and after of the draft FEMA floodplain map. And so when you zoom in and out, and then use the slider in the middle of the screen, you can see new proposed floodplain areas versus existing floodplain areas. And so I wanna make sure that the listening public knows how to navigate getting to that. You can zoom in very granularly. Stacy, I don't know if you wanna zoom in on, for example, a chunk of Brookings. Let's go, yeah, on the south side of town, our folks down by Western Avenue and the S-curves, for example. To slide that over to see the previous version and the new proposed version, I think is an important thing for folks to recognize, and understanding those provisionally revised areas. And then the difference between a Zone A, A, E, and Zone X are all gonna have different impacts on your national flood insurance programs. And so, for folks looking at that, I think that's an important thing to understand. The other piece that I wanted to talk about was the FEMA floodplain hydraulic model. To Bob's point last time, it's all done through LiDAR data in terms of kind of topographic information. And then FEMA goes in and models drainage structures. The challenge is, what I have heard from other counties is that it models large structures, but it does not model culverts. So when it comes to areas that are served by heavy drainage structures, what you're gonna see is more backup of floodwater that impacts the potential for that zone to be considered flood inundated, assuming that no drainage structures exist or are clear enough to actually use. That's some of the conversations we've been having about, you know, we've got an awful lot of culverts in Brookings County. So if none of those culverts are actually modeled in the hydraulic model from FEMA, an awful lot more areas of Brookings County are going to appear to be more significant problems than they have in the past, because those drainage structures aren't modeled in the hydraulic model. So Hamlin County, I know for one, did an entire hydraulic study, paid a civil engineering firm to download the FEMA data. It's a HECRES, HECRAS, I think, Hydraulic Engineering Center River Analysis System 2D Model of the entire county. And then they took survey data and the culvert inventory and modeled in, after the fact, all of the culverts that were not modeled, to be able to have a better hydraulic model of the county. That's certainly an option, not saying that has to be what we, the approach that we take. But I think an awful lot of folks are going to be more impacted with this than they realize. So, at least wanted to bring the discussion and point folks to the resources that exist. So, with that, questions?
What does AE mean?
AE is a-
AE is a floodway in South Dakota, in Brookings County, the only thing that's got floodways would be the city of Brookings, because they've had advanced studies.
Because in our zoning ordinance, we have nothing where we use AE, we have Zone A, Zone B.
We do not have AE identified in Brookings County.
In Brookings County, right? So most have an actual hydraulic map to get to, I can't remember what it stands for, but that's-
AE, you've got subsections, like usually every five feet or whatever, it's cross-sections. And that's why the city of Brookings, they mainly started doing it because of Six Mile Creek and some of that development over on the west side of town. So, that's why the city of Brookings has the AE. The initial flood map, in case people don't know, came from the 1969 record of flood. The city of Brookings, and back then, it was a civil defense office. You know, we documented, or they documented everything. And that's what FEMA based their very first floodplain map off of, and now this is a progression. And obviously, if you could get the culverts modeled in, it obviously would be to advantage. We have been using the new, we're aware of the new FEMA flood map, and when someone comes in to get a building permit in an area where it possibly could be affected, we notify the applicant. And because by federal law, we have to use the best used data that we've got. So if we know it's going into the, proposed to go into the new flood map, we have to let the citizens know. So far, we haven't had a big issue with that, but I'm sure you will in the future.
So what's showing on the map right now is the updated or the old?
This one, the one that Stacy has, she's got that slider moved all the way over. So this is the proposed new with 2021 data.
And could you slide it back to the other one for a minute? And see how we don't have that blue? And so what's the, the bright blue, the AE? What's the significance for Brookings County that so much of that's going to be proposed to change? You see what I'm asking?
Yep.
That's a huge change. What difference, and should that be impacting what we're doing with our floodplain stuff in our zoning rules?
Yeah, we'll have to take that question to FEMA on why that. Well, you got AE, which is the dark blue.
Right.
We've got AE all over the place. What we don't have, what yours were asking about when I was talking was the floodway itself. A floodway is different than just the regular, the AE, all the AE is, is a, from what I understand, an expanded A-zone. A-zone is the generic, what is known nationwide as the floodplain. Not floodway, floodplain. And then the AE, we'll have to get some data on that, exactly what FEMA's definition is here on this one. But the floodway is a totally different thing than just AE by itself, that's what you have to realize.
So because AE is a subset of A, it is still considered the 1% annual chance. So that's the 100-year flood mark, essentially. That's the 1% annual chance of flooding. But AE as a subset has a different characteristic than your standard A because of tributary bodies of water. Is that it, Bob, I think?
I believe that.
And so, as a result, every jurisdiction is a little bit different in how their AE is enforced. Some jurisdictions, because there are creeks and tributaries, will set their base flood elevation flood zone. So you would have to build a certain number of feet above base flood elevation with flood-resistant construction materials, or not build there at all, or, so you've got a handful of options. Some will do a more restrictive version of that in AE versus A. I don't believe we have any of that set up in our current codes or standards.
What we got right now, if you build in a floodplain, or in the flood zones, you have to be one foot above the base flood elevation.
But there's not a differentiation between Zone A versus subset AE?
Correct.
But other jurisdictions do have that set as a kind of differentiating factor.
Absolutely, absolutely.
We do not.
Okay, quick question, you said .1%, and I see the yellow, which is probably the most changed besides the dark blue, is to .2%.
Sorry, it is a 1%, not .1, to clarify. A is 1% versus X is .2%, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, so the yellow, so is yellow then gonna be considered in the floodplain?
It is not typically required to have flood-resistant construction in Zone X.
Or flood insurance.
The yellow area would be considered the 500-year floodplain.
Okay.
That is not affected, is not required to have flood insurance in the proposed yellow area. It's still in a floodplain, but not a 100-year floodplain.
Right. So NFIP-required flood insurance is not mandated for those yellow zones, only the blue zones. But it does inform folks, "Hey, in a 500-year flood, you might be in some soggy territory."
And we have been, Brookings County, me and Richard both have been to the FEMA floodplain administrators' courses in Emicksburg, Maryland. And FEMA has been as transparent as they can on this. We had our first meeting, I wanna say 2019, on this particular instance. Maybe even before that, down in Sioux City, Iowa, they came in and explained what they was gonna do. And some counties above us has already done, and they're slowly but surely coming down for just to get us.
And so I don't know, Bob or Richard, if you've heard from other counties that the hydraulic mapping has been helpful, that some of that modeling, adding in the culverts to show especially drainage in floodways and drainage ways is helpful for them?
I haven't heard anything yet. We do have an emergency management conference, September, matter of fact, I come from the South Dakota Association, the county commissioners, straight to the South Dakota Emergency Management Agency thing. And we can bring that question to them and get back to you, if you'd like, ma'am.
I think that might be helpful to kind of understand what those, what other counties are seeing as the impacts of having that more detailed hydraulic model. I do know that for some of the conversations that we've been having related to Midary Township, discussion of culverts being cleared and water flowing appropriately is a lot of the discussion. And so I wonder how much of an impact having that more detailed model might help us understand the problem, not necessarily make any changes, but to better understand the problem.
I would just like to make a comment, the floodways would be more like a more developed area. Out in the county, the water's gonna disperse out over the land. A floodway is a designated channel that's prone to flooding. They still allow development there, but you need to raise up a certain percentage above that to decrease your chances of flooding, is what the floodway basically is.
That's a good clarification, thanks, Richard.
And this just deals for the rural areas of the county. None of the municipalities, Brookings, Elkton, Sanai, they all have their own floodplain administrators. So this would be just for the rural areas of the county, no municipalities or other cities.
And I would imagine that an awful lot of those folks out in the county, especially agricultural grounds, they know these are slews. They're not surprised by that data. I think the place where it's probably more shocking is folks that are in the immediate three-mile joint jurisdiction area that aren't necessarily thinking about those impacts. And so just wanted to make sure that folks were aware of that.
No, that's correct. We are responsible for the joint jurisdiction. That still falls under our, for the agricultural part, and then, it's just almost like nuisances, you know? I've got control of all nuisances in the joint area, whereas sometimes you feel it should, you know, if we're allowing residential and the city's got the joint jurisdiction for the residential zones, they should do the nuisance on that, you know? So, that's where it gets to be a gray areas in that joint jurisdiction, even on this particular thing.
The other area impact would be the lakes.
Yeah.
You know, Ponce and Lake Campbell and Oakwood and somewhere there.
And we had major problems then in 2000, I wanna say six or eight is when the last map was updated. And then it was just a datum change. They changed the datum from 1927 to 1980, I wanna say 88.
88.
And that just shifted all the floodplain lines over so many feet. And that did catch us by, totally by surprise. And that did catch us by, totally by surprise. So this one we're monitoring. As far as I can say, like I said in the last county commission meeting, using the LiDAR data, we're going to have to have some good, good evidence to change anything that, because they've taken, we've got a lot of development out there in our, what we call the floodplain. And they get letters of map amendment, which means that the house is technically not in the floodplain anymore. FEMA's removed it. And they've got all that data. FEMA has got all the, because they issued the letters. So they, they've inputted that data from my understanding into this new map that.
Yep. So any of those areas of development where they applied for a letter of map amendment or a map revision based on fill, so they've filled in low lying areas to be able to develop. Those low lying areas are now LiDAR modeled correctly at their new elevations in this set of maps, which shows any of those kind of collateral offsets for where water is going to go around it potentially. And so those are some of the other areas that you start to see where the floodplain has moved. It's in many cases, as a result of those letter of map revisions based on fill, especially in Brookings County.
Yeah, because the FEMA stuff is one thing our office, we've never given a variance on. We refuse to give a variance on because you're dealing with the federal government on that. And I, I don't care what your opinion of the federal government is, it affects our national flood insurance policy rates. That's why it's so important we stay on, on top of this. And I do appreciate you bringing this to our attention, ma'am.
Other questions from the commission?
I guess I would just like, you know, that AE, like Commissioner Pierce said, what, what that difference is and how that affects, um, the type of insurance, if you have to have insurance, what, you know, just like the yellow is the 500 year, what's the dark blue? I guess that'd be.
By all means, we're, we're researching that and we'll send it to you guys in a BCC email. So everyone's got the same information.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any desire from the commission to, um, talk to other counties about their hydraulic mapping? And whether that's been helpful for them or not?
If there's, we have the ability to do something that, that will help our county residents potentially be in or out of the zone. You know, I think that would be worthwhile. Um, if there's something we can do to mitigate, uh, potential expansion of this that would cause problems. Um, and we have that ability and we need to spend some resources to show that we have culverts. We were investing in all these culverts. We've been doing it now. We're investing in our structures. Um, it just makes sense for us to show those to them, to the FEMA that we've done this and maybe that will help mitigate some of that. I mean, is that what the situation is? They're mitigating some of the expansion of it? Is that right?
I think in some cases, I mean, it's, it's pretty select cases. If someone is going to file an appeal on a piece of property, I think that hydraulic model is what they end up using to do so. Um, and it, and it may make a difference for a handful of residents.
I guess we'd have to see what the costs are, but it seems like that would be the next step for us to try to.
What I'll do is the county's commissions are all right with it. I'll contact Jay Gilbertson, who I basically, his, his East Dakota Water Development District, we use as our hydrology question. And then maybe I'll bring it up to Banner's. They've got, they've got some hydrologists on staff just to see if they think that type of modeling would help in this.
And do we get feedback from Hamlin? I mean, they're, they did it, right?
They did.
Yeah. Maybe talk with them and see if, how they feel it'll affect them.
Okay. We'll do some look, looking at it. Thank you.
I just have a, another question. Bob, as relates to, um, what's in the joint jurisdiction area or not joint jurisdiction, excuse me, in the Midary Drainage Project that we're working on with Banner? Are they using the new FEMA map for, for water when they're talking to the landowners? Or are they doing that from the old information?
They are actually doing that from, from real life gauge, the gauge up in Bruce. And then they're using the LiDAR data, latest LiDAR data, and then elevations that they've actually gone out and shot. They're not necessarily laying over the floodplain at all in that particular case at this time.
It seems like that might be a suggestion for, and, and I don't know if Banner has already asked for, um, that HECRES 2D file from FEMA, but that might be valuable information to kind of overlay with some of that conversation on the south side of the county.
And I can ask them, I know they have done a HECRES modeling on the Midary Township. That's what he shows us and we'll, that's how we picked up on the wall. We actually, you'd be surprised at the next meeting, we always knew that there was some kind of a wall in that township, in that particular area. And now they've actually found it by using the various, various GIS things. And we can identify where the, where the wall was and where the break was. And it's quite interesting. Some of the stuff we'll show you at the next meeting on that.
Super. All right. With that, I think we'll move on to item number nine, Commission Department Director's report.
You can see the VSO report that I included, 61 appointments or cases worked that was down a little bit. Um, Courtney was out of the office, had, had some vacation days in July, so that, that, that number's down a little bit. DAB van rides, that's up 23 and then, um, two outreach events. I had put in there to speak directly into your microphones. I think we all did better as a group today. So, um, just keep in mind, if you forget in upcoming meetings, I might be interrupting and scolding you, so don't be offended, but. So I'm, I'm just getting, I'm hearing from the public on our YouTube and then the TV that they can't, as soon as you turn away, you can hear, so. So when you go like this and talk like this to the side, see how that changes? We've tried omnidirectional mics and they just cause issues. So this is the best we've got, so. Um, Brian's not here. I had put on that, you know, scheduling that highway road and bridge tour on the 12th of October. Um, I haven't talked to Brian about that. I was hoping he'd be here today to visit with that. But, um, I don't know what that looks like on all of your calendars at this point. If it works, I can reach out to Brian and see if that works for him. Wednesday, October 12th. Does that work? No? Yes.
It won't move away.
I know. Yeah. And if you put it on your calendar now, then you won't book anything for that day. That's why we're doing this.
What, I may have been thinking.
What a concept.
Morning?
I think in most cases we've tried to do a half day if we could, and it seems like morning tends to work really well.
Yeah, I think we are, I think that we kind of started that last year with just, just doing a morning run, try to get back here.
And avoid a Tuesday, right after a holiday, because every, that Tuesday will turn into everybody's Monday and it'll be chaos.
So what time exactly would we be starting?
Um, I would, I would.
I'm only asking because leadership meets until nine o'clock.
Oh, well, I would think if we wanted to be done by lunchtime, we'd probably want to get going earlier than nine. So. I would think by, we'd probably want to meet by about eight and get going. Yes, yes. Okay. I will, I will check with Brian as well on that. Other than that, we just have, um, upcoming dates to look at. Our ARPA meeting on the 30th, two weeks from today. Labor Day is just around the corner, believe it or not. Fall convention, I think I have all of you attending at this point, um, out in Pierre. Not Angie, not Angie. Right. Four of you attending. Um, the first district picnic later in September and then I think there was some information that got sent out. More details to come about the Banner Associates Client Appreciation Event, um, in October. That's all I have unless you have anything for me.
I don't think so. Any other questions for Stacy? Report.
New to report?
I have a question for Dan.
Yeah.
Um, on the welfare report, there was somebody that was approved for $900 in rent. In the past, we always limited, if I remember this correctly, rent payments, $600. Have we changed our policy on that?
We haven't. Um, I think my understanding was there was an agreement with the landlord because it was, it was one month. And then I think it was the half of the previous month. And so it was more of us approving more than two months. While more than just a single payment of rent was my understanding on that one. Let me check with that. Does that make sense? Are you following that?
It does, but we've always said one month, $600 or something like that. And I'm just.
That was on a per month basis, but this encompassed more than just that one month.
We've never done more than one month, but that, that was my question. If we're changing our policy and.
Because it was so much in the calendar year, wasn't it?
Yes. Mm-hmm. Yeah.
That used to be the case anyway.
Well, that would, yeah, the budget, per month basis.
Just a question. Thank you.
Anything else? All right. We'll move on to item 11, Commissioner Reports and Discussion Items. Commissioner Pierce?
On, uh, August. The, um, telephonically with the Resolutions Committee from, uh, our state organization to talk about the unemployment insurance statute modification. We did switch the wording on that instead of repealing it to change it to read that it would apply to political subdivisions and nonprofits. And then on August 4th, we had public affairs and I think these dates are certain, but I haven't seen them come down. And some of you are involved, so you'll know this for sure. I believe the legislative forums will be September 24th here in this room. And that the forum for the county commission and the sheriff's forum will be the same day on October 1st. Is that what you all are hearing? And again, that would be here on. And then on August 4th, I attended the 4H barbecue with the rest of you, served a lot of chocolate milk and it was a very nice event. On August 9th, uh, did the conservation tour with the rest of you. And I just have to say that I don't know how, I did not know the, the, um, Brookings Kingsbury Duel. That water facility was sitting where it was at after all this time looking at that. That was very interesting. It was great that that was on the tour. On August 10th, we had a leaders roundtable meeting, which I don't normally report on, refer to the commission. But it was interesting because Mike Beam from the South Dakota Department of Transportation appeared by Zoom. And he talked about charging stations and the state is, um, participating in a federal program, I think they're required to do it, where they have to have a certain number of charging stations in place within a certain period of time under the federal government to qualify for highway funds. And they're looking at, they have to be every 50 miles apart. They're looking at Interstate 29, Interstate 90 for doing that. Uh, and then the conversation came up during that meeting, he did not know that we had a charging station at this building. And, um, ours, and then I'm going to move into our joint powers meeting on August 11th. We talked about this whole charging station issue at the joint powers meeting. And our charging station is a, uh, tier one. It's, it's the lowest. Slow. It's slow. Right. The federal rules require fast. Which I think is tier three. But anyway, um, our lease is going to be up real soon here for that charging station that we've got. And, uh, we're going to look into, uh, the city's doing the light work on this, getting a fast charging station here. But the city is also going to put two more charging stations in the parking lot over at the senior activity center. So they're looking at doing that on their own. So the whole charging station issue is they, the city did a study and came up with a number that we should have 11 charging stations in Brookings in the city. I don't know how that number was arrived at, but these three would count. The, uh, feds are probably going to put one someplace out close to I, I, uh, 29. You have to be within one mile. So the charging station we have won't qualify because we're more than one mile away from I-29. But it was all, it was all interesting. Went to the 10 county meeting with most of the rest of you, um, on August 10th. Um, and that was an interesting meeting. I did talk about that unemployment insurance thing. And a commissioner, and I'm sorry to say I can't remember his name, from Hamlin County came up and talked to me after the meeting and said, we just recently got that same decision from, um, the administrative law just from, from the Department of Labor. And I asked him to send me a copy of it because I wanted to look at it, but I haven't seen that yet. So everybody's kind of looking at if you are a reimbursing employer, what's going on with that? ICAP has purchased a building. And if you remember, we were talking on our ARPA funds that they were going, they were looking at building a building. Once the research was done, they don't have enough money. There's just no way with the cost of things today. The people that own the building that they're in in Madison wanted to sell it. And ICAP is going to buy that building and it's going to cost $350,000 to buy it. And then they're, they're going to need to do some remodeling. Remodeling will be between 450 and 650 for the costs on that. And I asked Eric to send Stacy an update for when we have our ARPA and he sent that out yesterday. And they have reduced their request for funding from us from, I think we were at, they were at 375. They reduced it down and asked if we could come up with 125,000 out of our ARPA monies to help them with the remodel on that building. So you'll be seeing that when we get together on the, um, on the 30th. He did say, because I asked, you know, city of Brookings allocated $110,000 of their ARPA money to ICAP. And I said, will any of that money go for this building project? And he said, no. The 110,000 that the city of Brookings is giving them is strictly for housing initiatives in the city of Brookings. So that's all that that can be used for. I think that was it for our, our ICAP. And if you're driving by the courthouse, our nine new trees are in. Um, we'll see what you think of them. And do we have watering going on a couple of times a week? Okay, great. So I was glad to have that done. Thank you. That's my report.
Commissioner Bartley.
Alrighty. I think we, uh, addressed all those plaits this evening. So we, or this morning, we got those approved. Or it sounded like it was good information, but I was in Minneapolis picking up my grandkids, Zoe and Xander and my daughter Jenny. And they're still here. So it's, uh, been fun to see the grandkids from Ponte Antioch, Washington, the apple capital of the world. August 10th, went to the 10 county meeting with you and she gave a good report on that. And, um, on the 11th, uh, did CDI's, uh, appreciation event. So that's my report.
Commissioner Jensen.
On Tuesday, attended the national night out down Pioneer Park. It was a real good event, I think. To meet some of the law enforcement and emergency responders and stuff. Um, I did get to throw baseball and dunk, uh, one of our deputies in the dunk tank. So. I did stopped out at the 4H afterwards and, uh, caught the tail end of a showmanship showed out there. On Thursday, uh, attended the pork barbecue. Another deal, I'm not exactly sure on the final numbers, but it, uh, seemed we had a pretty steady flow of people and it was well attended. On the 6th, I attended the Aurora Gala Days Parade. On the 9th, uh, conservation tour, which was very interesting and always is. On the 10th, also went to the Sioux Valley Commissioner meeting down in, uh, Madison. Interesting, uh, some businesses and just listening to the practices and what, uh, what's going on with the labor force and some of the other towns within the state. Uh, had a culvert meeting that morning with Stacy and Ryan and, and Brian. Discussed that earlier. And then on, uh, 11th, did the CDI golf event. Uh, had good conversation with the LTAP personnel and also a couple of vendors that the county does business with. That's all I have.
Commissioner Krugman.
Yes, um. For chocolate milk, uh, the 4H, uh, pork barbecue there. LeAnn was there ahead of time and I came in and filled it up. Milk. So, um, it's always a, it seems like the milk and the chocolate milk seem to fly out of there. So. Anyway, that was fun. Good to see everybody. Um, and then on the 9th, uh, we did the conservation tour. Again, I really appreciated the opportunity to see the rural water system and, and also the fact that they're using a lot of their funds, their one-time money for expansion of their system, which I think is a great use of, of those federal one-time monies. system, which I think is a great use of those federal one-time monies to be able to expand and use that and offer services to people out in the county and all over the place there to get rural water. You know, we're fortunate because we have wells and most of our wells are in pretty good shape, but to have that steady source, constant source, and source that is, is good quality water, I think we kind of take advantage, or we don't respect that enough, I guess. So it's good that we have such a good rural water system in our area there. And I'm appreciative that they're taking their one-time money and expanding their capacity and their ability to provide service. So I think it's the greatest use of funds for them. Also, did the 10-county meeting, let me see here. Yeah, okay, next on, 10-county meeting in Madison. Again, good conversation of what's going on in our other counties in the area. Then also, that morning, we had our township funding for our state culverts that we had talked about. And on the 11th, did the CDI event. So that's all I got.
On the 4th, also participated in- Days. And the 9th- 10th, 10-county meeting. The 11th, the Joint Powers Meeting with Commissioner Pierce, that she kind of alluded to us chatting about the charging stations. And I think there was some clarification that needed to happen, that the Assistant City Manager Jake Meshke was going to look into whether that was 11 charging stations or 11 charging ports, because there are two ports per station, so they were trying to figure that out yet. And then, last night was, the regularly scheduled Brookings Behavioral Health and Wellness Meeting was canceled as they're prepping for their audit this week. So business as usual, they're getting prepped to send out their request for proposals for architecture and engineering services on their building expansion. They, for those that did not see, the city council did confirm the $1.2 million contribution towards their facility expansion. And so they're charging forward, still moving, so. Commissioner Pierce?
Madam Chair, I forgot something from the Joint Powers Meeting.
Yeah?
Tell the commission that we are discussing and would like to know if you have any opinion on this, removing parking on the north side of the building so that it would just be handicap parking and not public parking. And the reason for that, that's a request that's coming from the city, because people make illegal U-turns and then the backing out of there onto Third Street is becoming a traffic hazard. And I don't know if you want to say more about that.
No, we specifically walked down and took a look at that situation. And it seems like there are a couple different ways you could handle the problem of the illegal U-turns and the frequency of use, the lack of visibility. One would be to make sure that it's accessible parking only. Two would be to remove parking entirely. And Commissioner Pierce and I were of the opinion that moving it towards accessible parking only might be a good first step. It's also relatively inexpensive to try because you can easily stripe that area and in preparation for that, see what kind of use it gets from our, those who need that kind of handicapped accessible entry at the finance office. And if it's pretty heavily used, then I think it stays as accessible parking only. If it's infrequently used and people prefer to use the west parking lot, then I think we could certainly reevaluate.
I just, is everything handicap accessible there? The curb, walking curb, everything's good?
Yep, there are curb cuts on both sections of parking. I do not know, I don't know that we have detectable, cane-detectable pads at both of those. I think we do, but I would have to double-check and see.
And the U-turns are coming, heading west and turning into the parking lot?
Isn't there only one spot that's available?
There are three. I think there are three spots.
There are three non-accessible, and I believe there are three accessible spots along that north side.
But the frequency of illegal U-turns into that parking area is multiple times daily.
And that street is so busy. And then backing out onto Third Street's not necessarily a good thing either.
It's a frequently blind backing.
If you're concerned about backing out onto Third Street, then you eliminate it. You don't put handicap parking there if it's still an issue backing out on Third Street.
Right. Totally agree. I think that's part of evaluating the frequency of use because there's some concern that we want to be able to provide accessible parking for folks accessing the finance office in particular, because that's, that's the primary county office at that level. And that tends to be where folks park when their only business is the finance office. So we don't, we don't want to disadvantage anybody or dissuade them from coming to the finance office by any means. But I think understanding the frequency of use on the accessible parking in particular might help.
We have an issue in town, even downtown, with people illegally turning across the street for diagonal parking. So it's somewhat of an enforcement issue in some respects. I say it a lot also. I'm not guilty of it. I think about it once in a while, but I'm not guilty of it. But, yeah, it's a, I'm not as worried about the U-turn issue as I am backing out onto Third Street can be an issue, but it's that way everywhere, where you have diagonal parking. So that, I like the access to the finance office and our offices versus the parking lot and having to walk all the way through the building to get there. But it's a little quicker to come in that door. I really don't have an objection to removing it altogether either.
And it would not remove the parallel parking on the opposite side of the street. So the north, the north side of the street where that frequent westbound traffic ends up turning illegally into the close parking, the, the parallel parking on the library side of the street would still remain there.
Ooh, well, then they got to cross a busy street.
Yep.
Which is counterproductive. Maybe some simple signage, no U-turn on the westbound side by the library, no U-turn.
The other, the other piece of it is, so in addition to the backing and illegal U-turns with parallel, or with the perpendicular parking, the angled parking in front of that door, you can't see pedestrians coming out into the street until they're at the street. And so as people exit that finance office door and walk between vehicles, they're frequently almost in the street by the time the next vehicle sees them. And then you've got a whole bunch of pedestrian challenges because nobody actually uses a crosswalk. You just cross at that parking area as well. So there are a handful of those. It's a multifaceted challenge. We have one for make it all accessible to start with. I think we'll discuss that, and we didn't discuss that in the Joint Powers Meeting. That was something that Commissioner Pierce and I discussed when we were looking at it at first. We can always test it out. Okay? Anything else? All right. We will move on to executive session in accordance with South Dakota Codified Law 1-25-21, parentheses 1 and 6 for personnel and security. Is there a motion to enter into executive session? Is there a second?
Second.
All of us in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We will take a quick five-minute recess.